This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm still pleased to welcome everyone to today's regular meeting of the Hudson River Black River Regulating District preceded by the Governance Committee Meeting. For members of the public attending remotely, the agendas are available at hrbrt新 York dot gov under Board Meetings. We ask that you please close other programs on your computer or phone, silence your cellphone, and mute your audio when not speaking. The conference organizer will monitor the program's chat function for public comment. We'll begin this morning with the Governance Committee, so I will hand the gavel, which is here. I will hand the gavel over to Governance Committee Chair Al Candito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been called the Governance Committee to order first order business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, and free of its own control.
Role call, please, Mr. Leslie.
Committee Chair Alfred J. Candito.
Here.
Committee Members Kenneth DeWitt.
Here.
Albert Hayes.
Here.
Nicole Allen.
Here.
Board Chair Mark Finkel.
Here.
Board Members Richard Byrd.
Here.
And Timothy Reagan.
Here.
Executive Director John Callahan.
Here.
General Counsel Robert Leslie here. Chief Engineer Robert Fulton, not he's excused. Chief Fiscal Officer Timothy Minicia.
Here.
And Director of Administrative Services Stephanie Ruzick.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie. We need a, I need a motion to adopt or revise the meeting agenda.
I make that motion.
Second. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2023, this was 2022.
Make the motion on 23.
Thank you. Second.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee business before us today, we have Mr. Leslie who will discuss or collect these servants.
Yeah, it is, I've received some of the confidential evaluation of board performance surveys to date. The rest of them, collect now or at your convenience, or not.
Everybody have a copy of it, so you can pull it out. Thank you, Mr. Leslie. Second agenda item is a motion to advance the board resolution of the Ninth Amendment to the Ground and Water Leaks Agreement at Stillwater at this time as the chair may be table.
Okay.
We will not address that. Third item of the agenda is a motion to advance the board resolution adopting amended bylaws affecting the Black River Regulating Districts. Please.
The amendment to the bylaws is simply to change the principal office of the Hudson River Black River Regulating District from our office in Albany at Karen Plaza to our current office, which is 54 State Street Suite 501 Albany, New York. That's the only change I noted in the minutes.
Thank you. A motion to amend, to accept their resolution and amend the bylaws.
Then make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes the business. The Governance Committee, this committee's standing.
Yeah.
Oh, a motion, Mr.?
Yeah.
I make that motion.
Motion, second.
So, Albert.
We don't need to, we're still recording, we can go right to the.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to call the monthly meeting of the Hudson River Black River Regulating District to order. Role call, Mr. Leslie.
Board Chair Mark Finkel.
Here.
First Vice Chair Kenneth DeWitt.
Here.
Second Vice Chair Alfred J. Candito.
Here.
Board Members Albert Hayes.
Here.
Richard Byrd.
Here.
Timothy Reagan.
Here.
And Nicole Allen.
Here.
Executive Director John Callahan.
Here.
General Counsel Robert Leslie here. Chief Engineer Robert Fulton, excused. Chief Fiscal Officer Timothy Minicia.
Here.
And the Director of Administrative Services Stephanie Ruzick.
Here.
Thank you. I need a motion to adapt the meeting agenda.
Then make that motion.
Mr. Hayes, you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Byrd. Any discussion, any in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the introduction of guests. I know we have some guests out here. Anybody like to address the, your honor? Mr. Presley, yeah, I'm sorry.
Can I have a talk?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Mike Presley. You may recall I, I'm Mike Presley. I spoke at the August 1st meeting pertaining to an appeal I had in the process of my 370 South Shore Road permit area. And I got a look at the meeting minutes from the August 1st meeting, and I noticed that there's some additions that I assume should be included for accuracy. And I sent some, I sent a note to Mr. Leslie yesterday. I don't know if that thing has been updated or not, but I do have some hard copies that we will pass around to the fore detective, like to take a look at the additions. I'd like to see me to the minutes to make them a little more accurate. I think, would that be okay or no?
I did circulate to the board the minute modifications that you wanted to make. It's, you guys got this via email. There is some dispute as to the accuracy of the staff's visit and whether or not that occurred in the manner that Mr. Presley has indicated. As far as the citations wherein, on the second part of his modifications, those are already reflected in the minutes as part of, or are reflected in the record of his appeal as part of the memo that made those citations or indicated those citations. I have not endeavored to modify the current meeting minutes, but will reflect this discussion in the September 12 meeting minutes.
Counselor, as well as, as well as what he asked to be included, that would also be included in the minutes of this meeting.
We could, we can include those in the minutes of this meeting.
Do you have a copy of that, of what you sent out yesterday?
I read it.
Yes. Didn't you have copies or something?
I do have copies.
You got one, or could I have one?
Is it the same thing as this, or?
It is.
We have that and have some additional information if you're interested.
Thank you.
Also included in there is a letter that I sent to the.
I got one, yes. You got another extra one there?
Yeah, I got one for everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's missing? Everybody got one?
Everybody has one.
Okay. So, the first page of this is, is what I just mentioned. And like I said, that the portion in yellow at the top that I embedded in the district's information, if they don't agree to what this says, as far as I'm concerned, we can move it down in my information, because those are statements that I made. So, I'd like those to be, I would hope that they'd be included in the ministry accuracy. The next page is, is the letter that I sent to Mr. Leslie, Mr. Callahan pertaining to the meeting I had on site with Mr. Mr. Callahan offering to make some modifications to the existing structure in order to bring it into compliance for the APA 200 square foot rule. And at the time, the August 1st meeting, it wasn't clear to me how that 200 square foot rule applied to private land. This is state land, and somebody here has duly pointed out that it's all land, so I get that now. So, I've, there's some detailed measurements on the wall. It is 220 square feet, so that's 10% over the, over the 200 square foot APA threshold for review. I didn't get an APA review. I grabbed a knock in the APA review, but I can take 25 square feet out of the wall, you know, just a portion of the wall, and bring it underneath the beneath the 200 square feet. Also, in doing that, that would expose a drain line extension that is put after the 20 year old existing foundation drain. It would expose that, so I could put it back the way it was, and that's one of the other things. Now, the other end of the wall also has one of these drain line extensions that's on my property. I don't think it's necessary. I take that out, but if it's, if it's, if it becomes necessary, I can take some material off that entry and expose that drain line as well. So, I'm willing to make modifications to bring this thing into compliance. I didn't talk about that last time, because I didn't think I needed to. Now that I understand the APA rules and I'm willing to do whatever it takes to comply to those rules.
You want to conclude, Seth?
Well, that's, the letters in here.
You want to conclude, Seth?
Yes.
If you go to, if you go to page eight, there's a little number eight on there. You can see that the portion of the wall that I would take out on the right side there, I'd take out about, I'd take out about five or six feet of the wall down there. Move that one, take about 25 square feet out of the wall, one extra surface area, that get it below the 200 square feet, and expose that drain line on that.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, everybody? And again, the left side or the north side of the wall is duplicates the south side and adds one of those drains in there as well. However, that's, that portion of that is on my property, so I don't know if the drain line thing is a big deal on my property. Now, if it is, if the deal's changed here, then I can, I can move that side in as well.
You don't have any jurisdiction.
Right. We don't have jurisdiction over that portion of the wall that is on your own private property.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that some other agency might not have jurisdiction. We cannot opine on behalf of those other agencies. I don't know that anybody here is going to run out and tell them. That said, if they come and find it, it's beyond what we can prevent from happening.
Well, again, I'm, I'm willing to do.
I want to make sure I understand this, you guys, so I'm probably a little slower than the rest of you. The, the part of this, John, looking at this on page nine, I think I'm in a great place where you'd be, I suppose. The part that's disputed then is the top layer. Everybody agrees that that's okay?
That, well, that's, we, the right, that's not the position the regulator.
Okay, that's why I want to make, that's why I want to make sure I understand.
As I said into, as I said to the board, after my onsite visit with Mr. Presley, my proposal was in response to this proposal, to, to leave that in place and to fill the lower portion of this retaining wall so that it intersects the shoreline.
Okay.
So, that, even though that was not, that was not permitted by the work permit, I am suggesting that, you know, in my counterproposal to issue President, that, that portion. Because if it's not the 18 inches that, that the board specified in its original seeker approval in 1980, it's pretty close to it.
Okay, so the top part is, at least we're close to maybe having that resolved, the top part of the wall?
In, in, in my opinion, yes.
Okay.
From my end.
Yeah, just want to make sure I got that right. All right, so now, if I go back to, and I don't have the pictures of the old wall, the old wall is in the same exact place where the bottom part of the wall is now?
Yeah, actually, if you go back a little bit, if you go to the screen, picture on the left, it is the original.
Okay, is this, is this what we're talking about? Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so that's basically the same place where that lower, the lower wall is now.
Correct.
I started on last month, yeah. Now, just on your diagram here, I'm not sure what's going on with the slope. Is there some issue with the slope here, too, you guys?
What's the, the picture?
It's a 30% and 14% slope.
The picture where it says understeer, this is, as I understand it, the, from Mr. Callahan, what he is directing me to do is to leave the top portion understeer, take down the bottom portion, and mix that with five yards of dirt and, and creak instead of existing, for the grass there that I now mow is on a 14 degree slope, and he wants to turn it into this 30 degree slope, if you, with, with a five cubic feet maximum amount of fill. If you go to the next page, it just changed.
Just on that, so, now, will the five feet of cubic fill come close to fill in in that difference in the slope?
No. If you go to the next page, the next page will show that. The next page is a drawing of the existing wall. It's about 14 degrees. The existing slope, which is 14 degrees. And then the green area would be the amount of fill, the amount of area that would, that five yards of fill would cover. So, it would come out about two feet from the wall. Where if we wanted to do, put this 30 degree slope in that comes from the top of the grade there, that will take about 24 cubic feet of fill, which is pretty significant. And frankly, I think that would require a DEC review to do that, because that's a significant amount of dirt and a significant change in topography. Topography, we have now the same topography that has been there for decades. This would be a significant change in topography. I can say, to achieve that 30, 30 degree grade, but it's going to take, it's going to take about 24 cubic yards over the width of that.
Your question is, is there something magical, magical about that angle of the pose, that slope? You know, we're sort of ambivalent on what the slope actually is. Our, our position was, you can still, if you intentionally fail part of the lower wall, you can still embed that river rock as he does, sort of on the, on the portion of the slope between the house and the road, to kind of retain part of that slope. If it's deeper than 30, or if it's lower than intersecting with the top of the wall, I don't think we, I don't think we really concern so long as the, the wall itself is, is this man.
I think the point is that it's a significant area to, this picture includes the rocks, by the way. So, if you, if you mix the rocks into the dirt, then it will all align in the same place. So, it'll take a significant amount of added materials to achieve what I understand, you definitely could ask me to do five cubic yards, it doesn't, it doesn't be much. So, I mean, it doesn't seem to, it doesn't seem logical to me. Whereas, what I'm proposing to abbreviate the wall, take a portion of the wall down, to get within the DEC guideline or the APA guidelines, I would think would be logical. And again, it's loose by dilate stone, but it's not a permanent structure. It's not, there's no foundation underneath it. It's just a, I would think that would be appropriate. If you read the, and I have a copy of the DEC guideline that talks about that. It says, you know, rebuilding kind of logs is smoothway stone. APA guidelines is the same thing. So, I would hope if I beat those two guidelines.
Okay, are you, are we all in agreement with that being the DEC guidelines on that? What he just said? To rebuild the wall with existing, is that, are you in agreement with that? I just want to make sure I, I know what's been agreed to and what's not agreed to.
I don't know that I'm going to opine for DEC as to what they would agree is appropriate.
I have got these little documents, if you want to see them.
I just want, I wanted to see, I want to make sure I understand where we all stand. That's all I'm trying to do is, not, I'm just trying to make sure I understand this. So, okay. But what do you understand from the DEC laws? Is that correct? Okay, I understand. Okay.
I'm not sure that I can give that.
I'm fine. I just, yeah, I'm just trying to understand where we are.
If you like, you see the document.
No, I remember you showed it last time. I just, that was one of the questions I had. I wondered, that I wanted to understand, is are we in agreement with that and stuff and whatnot?
Okay.
To the extent it's useful, we haven't, in my discussions with Mr. Presley, you know, I haven't challenged anything, any representations he's made relative to DEC regulations or APA regulations. I just didn't think it was relevant, you know, to, to, you know, whether or not we approved the work or could approve the work.
Any other comments or questions? We will pick this up. I have one more question, if I can ask, just, again, so I understand and stuff I'm going through. So, if we were to do this all over again and come up through here, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, the replacement of the wall wouldn't be great. I mean, I'm not saying that this is granted. We would come back and say you can't replace the wall. What, is that what we would, is that what would be the?
That's, you know, absent other direction from the board, a change of policy or practice that we would then have the permit department undertake. We have not permitted retaining walls. My knowledge, the last 15 plus years, you know, counsel has pointed out, you know, the need to do some things here to strengthen our position from a regulatory standpoint of what we permit, what we don't permit. That's within the board's discretion as well. To answer your question is, yes. I mean, in, in this case, what, what Mr., you know, again, for me personally, it's hard to, to get past the top line of the issued work permit, which is permission to direct the retaining walls denied, because that, that is, that's what we do. We look at that. I don't want to get into a debate on, on what's permanent and what's not, but, you know, things that are temporary, ephemeral, you know, chairs, a fire pit, a fly hole, docks, a staircase, these are the things that, in a lot, in order to facilitate access, which is the intent of the access permit system, the regulating district is not allowed in full permit. Having said that, we are all aware of retaining walls that exist on state land around the reservoir. They were constructed mostly under permission from the regulating district at some time in the past. Some of those retaining walls are of great interest and great note and stand out compared to others. And again, relative to conversations you've all had with counsel on the subject, you know, that's not helpful either when we are trying to be good stewards of the state land. But at the end of the day, I mean, just like, it is not for a one property owner, the state, to prove to another property owner who wants to construct something on the state's property that he or she cannot do so, you've got to get permission. Mr. Presley went through the correct process here to seek permission, and he did get permission to do some of what he wanted to do, not all of what he wanted to do. But to answer your question, Mr. Reagan, yeah, we would not, we would, given this experience, I think we, we'd take a look at whether or not we are as clear in the language in that work permit as we can be. I think we were, but clearly, Mr. Presley's here. He built something different than what he thought he would build. Build. That alone suggests that enough uncertainty existed. I take him as, as word that he wasn't trying to pull a fast one here. And that's something we have to put a long and hard look at, in addition to what Mr. Leslie's consent for a couple of years, adopting a new seeker, new regulations.
Right. But again, if we, if we have any questions on this, we have to ask it right now, right? I mean, we can't, we can't ask these and, I just want to check that.
Wait, you're never compelled to take a vote on anything upon which you do not feel you have all the information you need.
I just want to, I don't know if this is the right place to ask some of the questions that I want to ask.
Yeah, absolutely. You can.
I think it is.
Okay. So, so then, you know, the question I go back to, did we, do we, when we have somebody come in with a project like this, do we require drawings to help reduce the confusion?
We require sketches on the application.
Okay.
But the sketch can be a handwritten drawing on our application form. Doesn't necessarily always have to be something that a, an engineer or an architect.
I understand, it could be, but, but we, I'm just trying to think of ways to reduce the misunderstandings that may exist between two different people, one person going one way and somebody else going the other, and nobody with any ill intention at all. Just everybody thinking this is where they're going, and I was trying, I was trying to understand that. And I keep coming back to one thing. There's an existing wall there, and if I have to repair it, what do I do?
The repair, we do, we do permit repair. We have permitted repair in kind, not, not reconstruction of the wall. That, now, we wouldn't, we wouldn't permit repair of a, you know, a mortared wall. In this case, if you had to reset some stones that were loosely placed, we would, we would permit that, or steps, stairs.
Yeah.
Repair of existing.
Because, because one of the things about repair versus replace, that becomes, that becomes a kind of a sticky thing.
It is.
Start getting into that. That's where the camel gets his head in on the first time. The second time, a hump comes in, the third time, another hump comes in.
As you want to know, the chair had asked if Dan and Danielle would be available, if the board had questions. They are here today. I don't.
I'm going to bring them in.
Have we seen that application sketch?
There's no sketch.
There is no sketch. There's a narrative.
There's a narrative.
We do have the narrative. I can, I can read you the narrative if you.
Those pictures, you know, of the existing walls.
Right.
Right.
I, you know, before Dan and Danielle come in, I suspect that there was a jurisdictional inquiry with DEC and jurisdictional inquiry with APA. That would be our normal course of action. You know, application comes into us, we recognize that other agencies may have jurisdiction, we reach out to them, get an answer back. Typically, when I was at DEC, that kind of a jurisdictional inquiry would result in a written jurisdictional determination by those other agencies back to us that would paper our file. I don't know that I've seen that here. I think our practice is more along the lines of a phone call. This is what we believe is going to take place. DEC or APA, say thanks very much. Yeah, we want to look at it further, or no, we're good. You guys go ahead. That is one of the areas we could probably have our staff shore up a little bit. That said, I don't think we have any indication as to what DEC or APA looked at as they opined that they didn't really care.
Whole other can of worms.
True. It, it would have, but the clarity would be there.
Yes. Now, on, on page three, the before picture and the after picture, the before picture with that, with the wall that is crumbling, is that on DEC property?
The corner is on my property, but it's just, not, not too far from the corner is where the, is where the taking line crosses. The one, taking line crosses on an angle from one house to the other. So, it's about, from the front of the house on one side, it's about a 12 feet, and the other side is about a 12.
Do you have a larger picture?
Or is it on my property, the rest of the town?
The creep, crumbling wall. Yeah, it's right, I just got a picture right there that shows that. The last time we did.
Right, I, I remember, because I look like Biker's home, the original Biker. We have a full page, sure, the whole wall.
I thought we did. I don't know whether it's a header behind that. Is that it?
There.
Yes, so I, I have a question. In relation to that tractor that sits there. So, here, pre your replacement, we had one wall. Now we have two. So, in this photo, where is the top wall now? Is it back here?
Where the, where the ground rolls back, yeah.
So, you were able to level from, from the house to the new set, the new top wall, and then there's the step, and then there's this new wall here?
The, the ground kind of rolls back at the top of the old wall.
Right. Well, what I'm seeing, I'm seeing a step. I'm seeing a larger wall at the bottom, and then I see flatness, then I see this wall. So, in relation to the, the original wall, where was that original wall in relation to these two walls?
The bottom.
Here.
Yeah.
So you were able to right, raise this up with dirt?
Well, you know, it, it rolled down, so if that wasn't there, it would just roll down.
But you made this slope more gentle. And, and I just, so this, that is up here.
Yeah, it's seven eighty, where the tractor's at seven eighty, and the top of the, the upper wall is seven eighty.
Thank you.
Any other comments, any, any other discussion?
Oh, I added one question, trying to understand, like, I know in the original presentation, there was the adjacent property as well that we made a concession to approve. What was the difference between that approval and this one?
So, the board's original nineteen eighty seeker talked about maintaining the natural contour of the state property. And my, so we took a enforcement action based on the approachment. First appeal was to the chief engineer, he upheld that enforcement action. When it got to my level, I looked at it, and I looked at the pre pictures of both retaining walls. And the other retaining wall had not failed. There was no material, in my opinion, trying to come to a, a, a middle ground here where we could all, not everybody got what they wanted, or maybe what they needed. There was no material change in the natural appearance of the state, state land in that location. If you look at the, the failed wall, which is the pre-construction photo here, and there's a, there's a better picture here, I thought that construction of the new wall in that location did alter the pre-work appearance of the state land. So, Mr. Leslie would, would want me to have a little more to base that on. The best I can tell you, I was, I was trying to come to a, an agreement or, or at, at my level, which maybe prevented this discussion and would not, would not require that Mr. Bresny take down both walls at great expense. So that was, that was my, my thinking behind it.
Okay. Approximately same size, or were they?
Same.
Okay.
John, on page nine, on page nine, I remember in the last discussion, there was some discussion, if you look at the bottom of page nine, where the rocks are at the bottom, there was some discussion about that something should have been done there, and then slope it down? Can, can somebody explain that to me again?
Well, it's a, I'll, I'll take, I'll take advantage of your question, you just pointed out, you know, when Mr. Bresny and I met on site, he mentioned that Mr. Fulton and I both, in the last discussion, conflated the issue of the shoreline erosion and the, the wall that he wanted to rebuild. I didn't think that was the case, but I went back and it was the case. So I don't, I don't think it's relevant to how the, what action the board, board takes, but I did indicate that relative to the river rock discussion that Mr. Bresny had on site with Dan and Danielle, that that pertained to the erosion control along the shoreline, and that was that idea. So I want to make sure I point that out, and I thank Mr. Bresny for pointing it out to me. But the shoreline erosion is something that Mr. Bresny had also come to us about in shoreline erosion control work. We do conduct that around the reservoir on a priority basis. This isn't at the top of the list, but it is a site that we would address. We would address it with riprap. Individual residents can also seek and obtain a work permit if they don't want to wait for us to address the shoreline erosion. They can do that with riprap, or they could do it with another sort of heavy stone if they prefer. But, but that's, those issues were separate and distinct. I think I conflated them during the last discussion, and that was incorrect.
Okay. Anything further? I mean, we're going to come back to this, but I, I did ask the staff to come in and talk of, just to get their side of this, and then we'll continue from there.
I have a couple more pages here with their answers to questions I had at last.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt, go ahead.
I don't know if I did a good job answering those questions that I'm asking. Here on page thirteen, the first question is what is different? So there's an explanation of what we're after, there's a picture of the, you know, broken up stone, it was a sharp edge, and blah, blah, blah. But you see that all the way down the road. Second one, what could be done through the work permitting process? And I said, I think, I think the certain A P A and D E C rules should be included on the, on the, let's say, the board website, so it's easy access for the permit holders, because that information was not available to me until, quite frankly, the fourth step of the, of the appeal process. So I think all that information should be, should be up there. And the state considers, if, if you play the board on a permit, it should be supported by, I would say, some D E C review documents, as opposed to a broad statement, you can't build a wall, which these documents conflict with that, actually. You know, you can't build a wall under these certain guidelines. So is that, and then one question was, how much time did we discuss after Mr. Kiskus and Ms. Thorne suggested I can do a river rock repair? How much time was spent discussing details? The short answer is no, the long answer is, we've been at that discussion for about thirty-five, forty minutes, and we've been in it in pass. And once, once they said you can do a river rock repair, I, I thought we came to a, a God, we were in agreement. And I thought a river rock repair to a loose lay river rock wall would look a lot like a loose lay river rock wall. I thought that's what we agreed on. And, and there wasn't a process inspection, and somebody came there with their stack of rocks, and there's no feedback from that. So that kind of supported it, I think we're on track now. And then, was an A P A review conducted at all? I didn't, A, I wasn't aware of the A P A rule. And, and B, if I'd been, well, if I'd been aware of the A P A rule, I can assure you that thing would have been probably two hundred square feet. No way I would have built it bigger than two hundred square feet, I knew the rule. But anyway, A, I didn't know the rule, B, I didn't know about the two hundred square feet, and, and, so no, there's no, no A P A requested. And again, what I'd like to do now, is shrink the thing down to two hundred square feet, so we don't need an A P A review. What do we got? So I, and I just, my unsolicited comment about the in-process inspection, that it's really important that the, that the, that there's going to be an in-process inspection, that the owner be notified, the contractor be notified, and everybody's there for safety reasons, the contractor is always going to visit her. And, you know, I think for clarity reasons, the owner should be there, so if there is an issue, we can discuss it in, in process, and we can, we can squander away the time. That's all, I appreciate you. I'm a real gentleman, I can't lose here. I got a stack of permits like this in the house, I've always gotten permits ready, I thought you had a permit for this.
Thank you.
I should have gotten one.
Thank you for your presentation. Can we have you come in?
Sure. I just want to get their thoughts on. Yeah, they're not, they won't answer any questions the board has.
Okay. All right.
Hi.
Welcome. We've heard a very thorough presentation from Mr. Bresny, and I just want to get a feel for how you, you know, how you came to your decision and what went down. I mean, it's not a he said, she said thing, I just, I just want your input on that, what we discussed. So, I'll open the floor to you.
Oh, well, he put in a work permit request for a retaining wall, and we denied those, so that's pretty much the beginning of our, our, our decision there. We don't allow those on state land. Beyond that, Daniel, what was the rest of that?
Well, we, we, we met with him, you know, because I, a lot of times, if I'm going to deny something, I'll try to contact the person and be like, hey, you can't do this, but you can do something else, just so it's not like I'm just outright denying something. So we met with him, we explained that he couldn't build a retaining wall, and that retaining walls aren't allowed greater than, I believe, it's eighteen inches tall, which that's clearly much higher than he wanted. And we said, but you can put riprap in, because that's what we allow, riprap stone. He was worried about it being dangerous for his grandchildren. So we said, all right, the river rock, meaning round rock, because it goes in the river. And he has river rock on his private property, and I even pointed to it, I said, yes, you can do that. And he said, oh, all right, you know, that's fine. So that's why the work permit, I changed riprap stone to river rock. That was my understanding. We went back there, and it was all flat, basically field stone stacked up into a retaining wall, which is exactly what I told him he couldn't do, so.
Pretty much it in a nutshell. Okay, anybody from the board here have any questions?
So he could take that wall down and push it down to the water level and cover that, so, so he doesn't have any, any erosion, correct?
Yes.
Which we, we gave him the option as well when we were there, bring in, we allow like up to five cubic yards of soil. Since that's high above mean high water, if he wanted to slope it down and put plant grass, it doesn't erode. We did give him that option as well, so. I gave him several options that day when I met with him.
Do you feel that it's very clear?
I feel.
As far as what was the old wall, could be replaced as is, and it could be replaced by river rock or by other stones?
Riprap, and I didn't say as is, it would have to be like a three to one, like slope, like we would in, with riprap stone, because that helps prevent erosion, because that's what he was concerned about, is that it was going to erode underneath his house. So we said, yep, you can use riprap stone, which it won't be allowed for anybody.
I don't recall an A P A or D E C jurisdictional inquiry, did you make it?
We typically do not, with riprap stone, they're not interested in, in those, unless they're doing any kind of excavation on the plate bed. If they're just, this is way above mean high water, they would only require that below mean high water. But in this case, way above, and D E C and A P A don't want any of that, if it's, they're just dumping rock on the bridge, on the shoreline.
Did either one of you arrive at that site while it was under construction?
We did not.
Nope. Do you know anybody else that did?
We had a parent, I don't know, someone else was there. They were looking at a neighboring area for riprap, is my understanding, at some point over the course of the winter.
Okay, you don't know who that is? All right, any, any other questions? Thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I'd like to open the floor for a discussion, with the board.
Can I ask John a question?
John, here.
The five cubic yard restriction on, on material, where is that, what's the source of that?
I think, can go consult my colleagues.
I just, I, I think that.
The minute they walk out, I'm sorry. I think that is, that is the limit under, under our existing type two?
I, I believe that's true.
On any property, or if we had a larger, if we had a wider waterfall, if we had a double bottom, so we're restricting from five foot, five cubic yards to so many.
Yeah, we're talking about the, talking about the, the fill that would be used to, to, if you're going to intentionally fill that wall to create a slope which is not as, not as steep.
But, but just curious, the, the source of, of, of regiment, five cubic yard, why not?
Well.
Just, it has to be cited somewhere.
I think it is in here, I'm not seeing it initially, but, first thing in here is, these are not deemed to have significant effect on the environment. It's positive relocation and recreating of less than one hundred yards of earth material between the taking line and the fluctuating reservoir line. By the way, our own seeker rules, speak of the taking line, it's New York State property boundary, sorry. So, yeah, that's, that's between, between the property boundary and fluctuating shoreline, which is basically what we're talking about here. That's what's permitted in our own seeker type two list. But I do believe that there is a restriction on, for five cubic yards somewhere else.
Is there a frequency on how often you could have five cubic yards?
Not in our.
So typically, we, we will get, not necessarily on an annual basis, but several times over the course of a decade from a single permit. The ability to flatten out state property where it intersects roots. The roots, you know, grow up above the level of the property, and you want to just sort of grade to the top of the root, so it's not creeping in. And you will permit up to five cubic yards of fill for that. But then, in a couple of years, roots are bigger, you know, other trees, and so it's, it's, so the answer to your question is, we do permit recurring applications for up to five cubic yards. It's not a one-time, ever, kind of restriction.
Well, what's everybody's thoughts? You know, I, I, I always have a precedence problem, you know, if we allow this. And, and yet, I see where there may be a breakdown in communication, so I'm kind of torn on this. Now, the compromise that, that, that he suggested, is any of that acceptable to us?
Well, what's acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman, is not my purview. I, I, I think I accurately conveyed his proposal, which I think, if you look at the email that I sent you, comports exactly with what you just described. I think in that same email, the board, I conveyed, you know, my sort of counterproposal to him about keeping the, the top level retaining wall on that side of the property, under the, under the, the, the logic that if it's not eighteen inches, it's pretty close, you know, maybe a little bit, a little bit more in certain locations, and, and to, to fail the, the lower retaining wall so that it sort of intersects with the, with the, with the topography below the retaining wall, giving him essentially the same flat level outside of the, the house that he has now, so not sacrificing any of that. That was my counterproposal to him. If the board wanted my recommendation, I, you know, you know, my, my position is that we allow, so, you know, the board is going to consider another matter today that goes back twelve years, and it was based on its different set of facts, but at the, at the root of it was, we permitted certain activities. The permittee won't be on those activities, and I, I too am concerned about the precedent. But I also am empathetic to the, the issues Mr. Bresny raises. He's been very cordial, he's articulated his position very well, and what the, what the board decides to do is entirely within its purview.
Not to be shabby, but I think.
Well, there's a first time for everything, I'm sorry.
I have the time to get to where we can have two groups that far apart. I mean, it just, that's my problem right now, I'm trying to sort through it. And I, I don't believe anybody is not telling us what they thought. So I'm not questioning anybody's reliability or, or, you know, anything like that. I'm just, how can we get that far apart? And so my, my thought process is, I guess I'm almost where, I would kind of like to see you and your team, John, sit down again and talk this thing over one more time, until next month, and come up with a resolution. Because how can we be that far apart in the discussion? So it's probably somewhere in the middle. But I think, my viewpoint is that if you guys sat and talked about it some more, maybe there's a way to resolve this. And if nothing more, help come up with a process so we don't ever get into this far apart between two groups.
That's what bothers me, I mean, I, I believe both groups.
I have no reason for anyone to, anyone to tell us something wrong.
Everybody walked out of that discussion thinking that. Everybody walked out in that discussion thinking that they understood what was going on.
I think we have a couple of issues here. I don't think it's a, I think it's layered. I think you're, you're both talking about closing the, the bar doors. And that without question needs to be done. The bar doors, the corral gates gotta be closed. We have to get a little bit tighter. But we also have something deliberating, a permit violation. And all we have to go by is what humans are telling us. One human is very explicit, her belief that she was explicit. And she told, this is what has to be done. Now, whether it was misinterpreted or, and that's the problem with our language. We use one word, means something different to different people. But it's, fieldstone is not dead flat stone. That's true. Retaining wall is a retaining wall, but it depends on how you define a retaining wall. And I think a detailed sketch would help me because you could tell, there's, here's a diagram. If you're an architect, you build a building and there's a door and a door is supposed to be over here and you put the door over there. It's not words, it's a drawing. We have no drawings to go by. And, uh, it's, so the only thing we have to go by is what, when it says denied to build the wall, it's denied to build the wall. The permit was denied to build the wall. As far as I'm concerned, there's a violation of the, of, of the permit request. Now, what's the corrective action? Is it five yards? And I'm just curious where the five yards because if you make a slope that would be, and I, I can show you with the diagram. Do you concur with the illustration in that diagram? The five yards of fill would only create that much of a steep slope?
I don't have any basis to, you know, challenge it.
Now, in, on this slope, could this stone be embedded in it?
Not in this year.
No, if, 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 I thought you said it would be okay to embed stone.
Well.
But not hit what's a wall structure, but more the, the ground slopes, the stone is embedded in the wall.
If you were.
Embedded, right?
Yeah, if you were at Mr. Presley's residence, perhaps he'd be willing to describe it. Uh, if you look at the slope in, uh, between that property and the road, the, the very first part of it, maybe goes up to a flat area. And that is, that is kind of what it's like. It's got round, maybe riverstone embedded in a, in a, I don't, I don't know if it's a grassy yard, but, or, yeah, something like that. I don't know.
Can't really see it clearly.
Yeah.
Looks that way.
That's, that's kind of what, what we had in mind. And, okay, open to variations on that theme like. So to, to Mr. Reagan's, you know, point about seeing if there's a, is there still an area for potential agreement?
Something.
Yeah.
Would I make a comment about slope? But my driveway, did you see the driveway in there?
I can.
Okay. So that's, that's 13 degrees. This is 14 degrees. So if you're aligned here, my driveway would be a straight line. So.
What about here?
This, this roughly the same. So it's like 13 degrees, 14 degrees, 13, 14. So it is all way back when anything was built. You know, the slope of the driveway hadn't changed. That doesn't have been added to that. And that's about 13 or 14 degrees. So it's this, so it's this, actually, this is actually the natural slope is, is 14.
So all the distance.
Get it here and it's still. What kind of slope is that?
Well, it's not dirty.
That's the last. What's the normal, what's the normal dump truck? Uh, how many cubic, uh, yards is it? Is it about 10?
Eight to 12.
Eight?
It's about big. Small ones eight, big ones twelve.
So you gotta start thinking about how many dump truck loads would have to go into that filler.
If you're on a lot of fight, you've got to wait.
No.
Yeah, my point was you're. This is 14, so that's gonna be. I mean, it's been getting back 14. It was, you know, closer to 19, it's 14 out of 19.
I guess the thing with river rock and fieldstone, a lot of fieldstone ends up being river rock. Again, that's a, that's a definition. I have no idea if there's a better definition that more people who deal with stone all the time. But just being an old farm boy, I know river rock or fieldstone ends up in, in, in the river. Cause you throw it in there when you're picking it off the land, which probably gets long.
Not the farmers.
And it wasn't in this area.
The farmers.
Yes, they.
Well, again, you know, we've been doing this for an hour, which is valuable.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong. But I'd like to bring to a conclusion, at least for today, if we wanna direct them to try to negotiate one more time and pick this up in Watertown, or do we wanna vote today? Pick it up, pick it up in Watertown. Take it up in Watertown?
If I would just add my, some additional thoughts. I, I do see the concern of having a precedent of a retaining wall. We are, we did grant one on the adjacent property, but I do see this one as larger, um, in scale and change of form. So it's one of those pieces that does need some, some sort of correction regardless of what is negotiated.
Okay. John, you were meaningful to meeting with them again and see.
Of course.
Let's see if we can come and let's compromise this if we can and move on. Sound good? Uh, I left this, um. Anybody else want to speak? I didn't need anybody else, please.
Are you done with the last issue?
I think we are.
Okay, my name is Bert. I live on Mayfield Lake. And I live down near the Curtain Avenue and my neighbor runs with me. But basically what's happened to the bay that I live in, I have, I started out with 89 and a half feet, okay, of beach rights. Basically currently I have no waves that I can use. Everything is just filled in, you know, everything has been coming in from that creek way back from when they put in the water treatment plant on the other side, uh, I guess, you know, um, that's when we noticed, uh, they never screened the creek, anything like that. I think the lane was fine for it or something like that, but there was no repairs, no, nothing, anything ever done. You know, one of the biggest issues here is that the things that are in that bay where I, you know, that, that, they're come all the way from the top of the village. Everybody knows about the Cleco beads, you know what I mean? And if the Cleco beads all the way at the top of the village basically end up in the aqueduct and flow into Mayfield Creek, which flows into the, into the bay that I live in. Then if you're gonna have, I mean, there are literally trillions and trillions of Cleco beads that are in the bay that I'm in right now. If I went down and I walked into the water in just a little bit, it's the, the top of the water is gonna be covered with those beads. Therefore, if it's, if the Cleco, or if them beads made it into all the aqueduct, well, then I gotta say so does antifreeze, so does motor oil, so does everything that is in this bill. Everything that is in that village ends up in the bay that I'm in. And it's very obvious, you can go in there, you can walk in there and you can see that it is a mess. It is very polluted. It's kind of been covered up for decades now. Um, and this is to the point to now to where basically I have no access. My next door neighbor who is farther out into the lake, he has no access to his beach rights. I have three other people that unfortunately none of, they all wanted to come today, but they couldn't get the time off of work. So I'm just wondering, I've always been told, I always asked if I could clean up the bay. And I have always been told, well, yeah, you can go in there and you can pick up the garbage. Okay, but the thing is, is the muck is so deep there, it would be up, it'd be above my waist. And it's all just nothing but muck. So with no real way to clean all the garbage out of that, uh, you know, going in by boat, that is kinda impossible now. You got cactails, you got everything growing up in there. I had, excuse me. I have pictures right here. I mean, I didn't really get them printed out or nothing like this, but I mean, if you guys wanna see them and scroll, these are my beach rights. And now, and it's since they last surveyed it, it was cut down to like 85.70 feet. So we were losing that much at a time. Um, and, you know, it's, it's kind of a shame for myself and for my neighbor next to me, and then my neighbor next to me, and that, you know what I mean? To just, we're watching the values of our houses go way down as the, as the bay keeps filling it. And it's filling in at a faster rate that, you know, than it ever has. So, uh, my big question is, is there anything that, you know, to tell you the truth, I mean, just my opinion and a lot of other people's opinion is that be, that bay needs to be dredged. Every, that, all that stuff should be taken out of it. It is nothing but pollution. It's the way that it's been. And like I said, now they got the algae problem in there with the poisonous algae and, and all the other stuff. Um, just too much runs into that lake and it just seems to be that nobody really pays any attention to it. So while we watch, while we watch the bay keep moving out, I mean, I know that you could say, well, that's just a natural process. But it is a really extremely accelerated national process with the stuff that runs in there. Not to mention the pollution, not to mention, you know, this is all stuff that you can go down in my backyard and you can go to the end of the lake, walk 10 feet in, see, could sink a shovel down. And I guarantee you, you're gonna find at least 100 of them Cleco beads that are in there. That's how far that, this has gone.
What? Excuse me. What is?
Yes.
What is a Cleco? I don't.
The Cleco beads are, they, they would, up to the village, they would be delivered in trucks that pump the beads in. So they fabric them into like, uh, uh, snow slats.
Yeah, they, they were plastic beads is what he said.
Oh, oh, just. Yeah, they're, they're the plast, they're plastic. They're the plastic beads that they pump into the pumps up there. And a lot of them, and some of them go into the street. So, and like I said, you know, what I'm saying is if you look at the, uh.
Had a plastic process there?
Or they did, they're molding.
There was, it's not there anymore. You know, it just, that has happened for decades and decades. Now, just a few years ago, the, uh, there was an oil tank in the garage that is there. There was a, a 275 gallon oil tank. And somebody unloading a truck punctured it. And, you know, and it just runs out into the, and it run, you know, everything runs out into the street there. So just to give you an idea, they punctured that tank and all the fuel came running out. The first thing the fire department did, they come screaming down Curtain Avenue, down through my backyard and put these floats right across May, right across the bay. And they did that because they know that that oil is gonna end up in Mayfield Lake. Now, a long time ago, there was a proposal to, uh, to maybe dredge out the bay and then put in, uh, from where the creek is, maybe put in a cement, you know, like a clean out pond or, you know, a cement, uh, thing that we're gonna do two of them. And then every once in a while, instead of everything running from the streets into Mayfield Lake, then they just clean them out once in a while. It would keep Mayfield Lake clean and, uh, and keep all this stuff from filling in the base.
We understand the, the nature of your complaint.
Yes.
I'm not sure that this agency is the right agency to address the pollution aspects of what you're describing. And I'm not sure that this agency has it within its mission to clean up pollution from outside the bounds of, of our, uh, project.
Might have to alert our DEC colleagues to the, to the, to the information.
Right. We could alert, but, but I encourage you to.
Well, we have brought this up before, um, uh, kind of, I name a five ghost. A while ago, uh, you know, had somebody here from DEC and they put in a thing to see how fast the, the, it was, um, how fast the bay was filling in. We never really heard anything of it, you know? Like I said, it's a shame that I, I live right on Mayfield Lake. I pay my beach rents every year, you know, all the other stuff. But I basically, I'm right on the lake and I have no access to it. So does my next door neighbor and it's just gonna continue. So as far as maybe cleaning out the bay, uh, dredging through whatever.
That is.
You guys are Hudson Black River, right?
We are the, we are the Hudson River Black River Regaling District.
Yes, yes.
Our, our mission is well-defined and.
Only regulatory?
Well, we deal with the lake and, uh, impoundment of the water and discharge of the water. The Mayfield Lake is created by the Mayfield Dam, which is.
Right.
While within our project boundary, not jurisdictional to us. That is, it's a county road. It's the town or village, I'm not sure which, that has responsibility for the actual dam.
Well, then why would I have to come here to get a permit to do any work? Or why?
It is in project boundary and it is, there are access permits there. The improvement of the water in front of your access permit is not our mission.
Rob, I, I think, you know, in terms of a remedial dredging project, an environmental cleanup, that would be under the purview of DEC.
That would be DEC.
And again, we, you're quite right to, to, uh, direct the gentleman that direction, but we can also help in that, I think, by, uh, sharing with them what we've heard today.
Absolutely.
And seeing what work you may describe that they've already done and seeing if they can take a, a second look maybe.
Right.
Yeah, basically I've been told from you guys that I can go down and I can pick up garbage, but I can use no machinery. I can use no anything. I can't pull out, uh, you know what I mean? I know that I could cut under three inches by the, by the shore, you know, trees and stuff like that that are growing up into it. But everything is happening out in the bay. And so basically I cannot get onto Mayfield Lake from my own property, you know, which is, you know, almost 90 feet. And, uh, you know, so what is growing in that bay and what has just come down the creek and filled in that bay? Who would be responsible for the removal of any of that if, if anyone?
Well, I think it's definitely based on your description, uh, which I, I'm sorry to hear, and I, and I take, take you at your word, the level of pollution. It would clearly be an environmental remediation project, uh, conducted by, you know, at the state level, DEC, at the federal level, it became the super fund site, the EPA. Uh, sounds like DEC has done some work there already. We wanna probably check in on what that work was and where they are and, and draw that to their attention. Uh, but clearly, you know, given the, the level of contamination that you're reporting, it's not something that could be treated as a clean dredging project. It would be a cleanup. And, uh, we'll have to get, uh, our colleagues at DEC and make sure they're aware of this. And you, uh, you indicated that they had done some work, uh, in the past to look at level of refill or maybe some other monitoring. Can you tell us how recent that was? Was that in the last decade?
Uh, it was probably about 15 years ago. And, uh, and all, you know, like I said, and this Bob Yost, uh, who lived on the lake at the time, he's since gone. But, uh, he got with somebody and I don't know if they were from here, if they were from DEC. I'm gonna assume they were probably DEC. So, uh, um, you know, but, uh, nothing ever came of that, nothing ever heard of that. I'm just talking the history of Mayfield Lake right now. And, uh, and, and basically they have known for many, many years, decades now, what's going on with that bay, what runs into it. And, but nothing is ever, nothing's ever done about it basically is, I mean, I'll put it simply. They, you know, it's just like, just cover it up and we don't really wanna talk about that.
Well, it seems to me that Mayfield is partly responsible for it. And they should.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
They should stop this. Or something.
Well, Cleco's gone now, you know, and so, but, you know, I'm just saying that the decades, that they did do that. It's all that time. And like I said, and even though when they had the oil spill and they come running down and put the floats across, they know about it. But if you try to talk to any about it, and that's why I'm here today. know about it. But if you try to talk to any about it, and that's why I'm here today, uh, they don't wanna talk about it. It's like, oh, no, we don't talk about that. We don't, you know, that's, that's, that's somebody else's jurisdiction.
But it is. So, so what I'm hearing is, it really isn't in our jurisdiction. We will help in any way we can to get you to the right place, because it's...
Would D E C be the next person that I talk to?
Definitely, D E C would be jurisdiction, yeah.
All right, bring those two back. It's my, um, okay, I'll go bring that up with them. I got an idea that I'm just like, excuse my pissing in the wind, you know what I mean? It's, uh, not really gonna, you know, they haven't done anything yet. So, getting nowhere with D E C, you know, it's, uh, I didn't know if the Hudson Black River would have any jurisdiction over them or not. So, it seems to me like you always hear that, well, you know, uh, even though we are part of that, we're not responsible. If, and, you know, there's another words, there's this organization, this, 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 and all four of them. You have to talk to all four of them. And I got an idea, they're just gonna say, well, we gotta talk to them.
Well, we, I, I think we, you know, with this board's leadership over the last few years, we haven't simply pointed to another agency and said, you know, go talk to those guys, and go talk to A P A, because we work on a regular basis with these other regulatory agencies. And I will reach out, I'll talk to council, who's got no shortage of time at D E C itself, whether that should be with remediation, or maybe start at the regional level, just to, just to see what institutional knowledge, or what data, what monitoring they've done on this situation. But clearly, you know, when, when you talk about an environmental cleanup of contaminated material, that would not be any, anything that would be within our purview, but it would be either on the, on the state side, on the D C's, or the federal side, EPA. But we'll, uh, we encourage you, I think, right, uh, Mr. Chairman, and council, and members of the board, to, to go to D E C, but we won't assume that, uh, we won't rely on that. We'll, we'll also share the information that you've shared with us, and be ready to assist them in, in every way to try and address it appropriately.
Yeah. I'd also contact your Assemblyman. He might be able to...
Oh, I'm going, you know, I'm actually going...
I don't know what district is Smalling?
Should be Smalling.
Okay.
Who? Smalling?
Should be Robert Smalling.
Robert Smalling, okay.
They probably lost it on the second side.
Yeah. They actually had, at the college, um, that were hooked at the college, and they actually made a tape that they even played in, brought home from school by the time I was bus driving for. And, um, they came down, they ran all their tests, and they found this, and this, and this in the bay, along with the beads, along with the oil, along with, you know, all the things that should not be in a lake. And, um, and they, I believe they ran that as far as they could, and then that just kinda disappears. So, I mean, every time this is brought up, it goes, uh, you know, it goes just so far, and then kinda disappears. So, and I can see, you know, where this is going now. So, I just wanna know, according to your Hudson Black River, what can I do to clean up that bay?
If it's contaminated, then you, you, we won't be able to issue a permit to touch any of it. You have to get, we will, we will want D E C to get involved, do the sampling, and run, uh, any remediation project, because that's contaminated material. Even if we shared with you the regular dredging, uh, tags or regulations for D E C, and you could go through a full seeker to get a dredging permit, any material that's contaminated, you're not gonna be able to touch on your own as a resident.
No.
And we would not be able to touch, even as an agency.
Right. So, someone would have to run some tests to find out how contaminated that is, and...
That would be part of the process, no question. But we can certainly, in what we've done for other, uh, residents who've expressed, expressed an interest in dredging, send you the D E C dredging regulations. And again, that's a permitting process where our role would be largely ministerial, but you'd have a lot of, let's say, hoops to jump through. You would have a lot of process to go through to get the necessary permits. But again, if, once you get to permitting things with contaminated material, you're not gonna be able to touch that material.
Right.
But, uh, but if you...
Is there a way I could get that?
I'll send you that. I'd be happy to send you that information. If you stick around here after the meeting, or you can easily email me through the website, or call me, or...
Okay, you are John...
John Callahan.
Did I talk to you, John, about a month ago? I talked to somebody from here, and they said, yeah, come up to the next meeting.
We always encourage everybody to come to the next meeting.
I think, didn't you, I see you personally down there with a shovel yourself.
I don't.
All right, I will check with D E C. I'll do what I can do with them, and, um, and we'll, we'll see where this goes. But I just wanna make you guys aware of, you know, of, uh, of that. And, uh, so, uh, so basically, as far as any of the, the brush, I mean, you guys all sold on pictures. I can't clean, take, pull any of that out?
Okay. Would you, I'm sorry.
My question is, you know, you guys saw what I had, right, uh, the pictures with everything that's on the beach and like that, to go to get access to the lake, could I pull any of that out?
Well, we, uh, what we'd like to do is, is, uh, see what you'd be proposing, and you'll be on-site with colleagues.
Okay, okay.
Danielle?
Yes.
But we're also wondering if you'd state your name for the record, please?
My name is Burton Fraser.
Burton Fraser, yeah.
B E R T O N F R A S I E R. Uh, yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Anything we can do to help you.
Well, thank you, guys, and, uh, we'll, hopefully, we can maybe get something rolling here. All right, thank you.
Uh, we saw some people sitting out there. Was anybody else who wanted to address the board?
I know the bells are here, Mr. Chairman, but you'll be taking up, uh, the issue that pertains to them, and they'll probably wanna speak during, during that discussion.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, in that case, we will move to, uh, of the approval of the board minutes of the last meeting. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the board minutes?
I will.
Second?
One second.
Discussion to change, Mr. Kendio.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, report of the executive director, Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report appears on pages thirty-eight, thirty-nine. In addition to what's noted in the report, I'll just mention that, uh, since I did complete the report, I attended a roundtable tourism event sponsored by the New York State Assembly members on the fifth, brought album, a lot of, uh, discussion about, uh, the role Great Sakadaga plays in local economic development, especially tourism-related development. Uh, had an opportunity to, uh, meet local business owners and local elected officials and participate in that discussion. I also wanted to just note briefly the tragedy that, uh, Mr. DeWitt and I were corresponding about over the weekend. As members may have heard, there was a drowning, uh, on Sunday on Great Sakadaga Lake. A forty-year-old male, uh, at Edinburgh, not too far from, uh, Twisted Tea, or the establishment formerly known as Twisted Tea, maybe, uh, but, uh, very, uh, very sad, and that fatality will be reported deferred pursuant to the conditions of our request. With that, I'll pause and ask, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, uh, Director? Thank you very much. Um, next, uh, contracts and actions. Resolution authorizing staff to accept an application for a permit authorizing access to state lands formerly permitted to Michael and Linda Bell, and to issue same upon completion of required work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Dr. and Mrs. Bell are here, and they want to, uh, address the board and speak to this resolution. If the board would like to hear from them. But if the board's had an opportunity to, to review my memo in support of this resolution, it appears on pages forty and forty-one. And just to briefly summarize, twelve years ago, the board revoked, uh, the permit, the access permit on the bells, uh, due to, uh, a encroachment and a violation that we were working through, the board was working through with them at the time, asked us for some certain work to be completed to address the encroachment. It was not, and subsequently, the board voted, uh, at its meeting in twenty-eleven, uh, to, uh, October twelfth, twenty-eleven, to be specific, uh, to meet in Utica to revoke the permit. Uh, Dr. Bell reached out to me about a year ago, and indicated that he was interested in speaking to the board about having the permit reinstated. At the time, the board had conditioned any reinstatement on returning the, uh, state land at this location to its, uh, pre-construction, uh, condition. Uh, and a large amount of fill had to deposit on the land. Uh, consultation with my colleagues, Dan and Danielle, a couple of site visits to the location, and we thought that, uh, removal of all that fill would be potentially more destructive on state property, and would be contrary to the intent of the board. Instead, uh, we've got other, uh, work that we've recommended that is embedded in the, uh, resolution and the supporting memo. And, uh, once that, uh, application is received, which we recommended the board would do, accept the application, and that work completed, we would re-issue the permit, uh, conditioned upon the, uh, the, uh, payment of past permit year's fees, and other work that is described, uh, and costs that are described here in the resolution. And I would, I would expect the board would like to hear from the bells, but I...
Yeah.
Is that to you, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
We would. Good morning. Thank you all for having us. Uh, we really appreciate you guys taking the time and expense to address our concern, uh, our request. And Linda and I live in Coglinville, as you know. And I wanted to make sure, this is really the first opportunity that I've had to, uh, actually let the board know what really happened in two thousand and eleven. Uh, Director Callahan is aware, because, uh, there's been some phone calls in the past year. But, um, I'm here as a result of a misunderstanding. Linda and I both are here as a result of a misunderstanding, and that's really all that I feel that I'm guilty of. Neither of us have ever been in any kind of trouble with the law or awards such as this. We are law-abiding citizens. I made a mistake. I had Mr. Rick Carbone do a project on our access permit area. I'm sure by now you guys are aware of his reputation. I'm relatively new in town. I've been here since the year two thousand. Mr. Carbone is not a friend of ours. Uh, he has done some beautiful projects for us. In two thousand and one, he made a ramp down to our twenty-by-forty outbuilding on our property in Coglinville, where we store our canoes. It was beautiful. It exceeded our expectations. In two thousand and six, he did our septic tank. It was great. The particular work permit that we're talking about here that resulted in a flagrant gross violation of policy occurred as a result of a misunderstanding. And basically, we had a, a slope similar to the photos that you saw in the, in the previous gentleman, a slope of about ten to fifteen degrees gradient from our outbuilding across a grassy area of state land that consisted of our permit area up to the beach. And I asked Mr. Carbone if he could flatten that hill so that I could not have to keep starting my lawn mower. Uh, I mowed the grass there, and it was very bumpy. And every now and then, I would, uh, hit a rock or hit a hole, and it was a mess. In retrospect, I literally could have just done the job myself with a wheelbarrow and some dirt, and my kids and some shovels. We could have done this. This was the smallest job that we ever asked Mr. Carbone to do. I asked him if he could flatten out the hill, and I went to work that day. And when I came home, there was easily, when we both came home from work, there was easily enough room, enough fill, enough dirt, to fill our twenty-by-forty outbuilding. And it was enough to fill a, a three or four-car garage. That isn't what I asked for. He didn't, and I, he didn't offer, and I didn't ask him for a, um, an estimate of the project. It was greatly in excess of what we expected. We did pay him, and since then, we both paid dearly with the loss of our, uh, permit. And since then, I have hired Mr. Carbone. The last project that we did, I had an area that I wanted him to fill, and so that there was no misunderstanding, I actually took stakes and string and ribbons and covered out an area, and I said, fill it until the strings are, are flush. Now, we, Linda and I are aware of some people on Lake Luzerne who had trees on their, their shoreline that blocked the view. And they made a mistake of hiring a budget tree service to cut down the trees. And they, their request was, we'd like you to cut down half the trees so we can see the lake. And when the, when they came to their summer property the next time, all of the trees were cut, about thirty feet high, just the tops were cut. And the guy, you know, we used to think this was really funny. I thought it was really funny until I got home that day and saw that the land behind our boathouse where we keep our canoes was left. And I said to Mr. Carbone, what is the deal? I said, I wanted you to make it flat. And he said, yeah, I made it flat. I, I made it level. I don't know why, but people want their lawns to look like a dog course. I said, no, we don't want this. We won't even be able to get our canoes down to the lake. We had to make a set of stairs to get down to the lake. We used to be able to walk right down. I had asked him to make it so that I could mow the lawn easily myself. Another thing that I wanted to say, and, uh, this is something I never really had the opportunity to discuss with, uh, Director Callahan, is that I never had the opportunity to come to any of these meetings, because I'm doing just what you guys are doing right now. I was doing what you guys are doing right now, which is working hard to take care of our families. We couldn't make any of these board meetings. And in retrospect, I, I think it was reasonable to, um, revoke our permit. And I think that the, the, uh, new evaluation that's, that basically finds, if I understand it, that to tear all that dirt down would possibly new, do more harm, and, and really wouldn't be in the best interest of the Black River, Hudson River Regulating District. In light of all of that, uh, I think that the board's actions, uh, what's been requested, I think that's reasonable. And, uh, my wife and I are perfectly happy to, um, do what is expected. But before I get into another misunderstanding, what I would like to ask, one thing I would like to ask today is, um, the remediation, is there anybody who can tell us what that's going to cost us? There was something to the effect of adding riprap. Is that at our expense, or is that... That's, uh, that's the proposal. And we can, we can provide some estimates, but you can get, uh, you can get quotes, maybe from Mr. Carbone, maybe not, but...
We might trace somebody out.
No, Mr., don't get me wrong. Mr. Carbone's work is, is quality...
Can I interject? Mike is a very, if you tell him something, okay, I'm in.
He'll be discharged.
We didn't see the permit. We didn't get involved with any of that. He had it taken care of. We're medical people. You know, we kinda, we, that was our fault. Now, he asks everybody, what are you gonna do? You know, what are the guidelines? Um, we were, we learned a valuable lesson that day. I wanted a path to our boathouse from our home for my gators.
Well, John, do you agree?
We have a full road. I, it's, it's way, it's beautiful. It's beautiful. But it is not at all...
It looks like a northway.
What either of us envisioned. And that is our fault for not getting things on paper, or it, it's, that is our fault, basically. So, we have learned a major lesson about getting a cost, getting information on permit, and all of that. We were, we were negligent. We just assumed, we talked to him, we had a good conversation, we knew what we said, and we got what we got.
And neither of us have ever been in any kind of trouble like this before.
We were a little shocked.
Again, it was something we could have done ourselves, had I not been working seventy hours a week.
Are you, anybody have any questions for them? I think this is pretty self-explanatory.
I'm convinced.
Well, thank you. Thank you for listening.
It's true.
We never really had the opportunity to say that. I feel like I was more of a victim than a perpetrator in this violation.
Yeah. We learned a lesson. Good one.
And we did pay Mr. Carbone for the work. I had to ask myself, "What's it gonna cost to get him those seven dump trucks or whatever, big, big dump trucks? What's it gonna cost, when we got home from work, what's it gonna cost for him to scrape all that up and take it home and make it so that I can just mow the hill?" Anyway, we did pay him, and we lost our permit. And now we're subject to fines. And I just want to make sure before we react to anything, we don't want a dot that's gonna cost us on our, we just want a dot. We feel very privileged to live on South Conklinville. And we are mountainous. We respect the environment and, you know, this is not something that I had ever envisioned being in a situation like this. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Since it's under contract actions, I'd like a motion to reuse the permit and to the completion of the required work.
Chad, you're recommending that?
Yes, yes. I warmly recommend
I'll make that. Second, Mr. Regan, any further discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Staff and committee reports. Governance Committee.
Say it to me.
First, first item you've indicated you're gonna table?
Yes.
Question?
We have one item to bring before the full board. There was a motion and a vote to move to the full board a resolution adopting amended bylaws of Hudson River Regulating District. As drafted and included in your package by Mr. West, which is a change of address on our all the others.
You have a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Mr. Hayes, Mr. DeWitt, any further discussion? You should be doing that, sorry.
No, no, you're
No, we're actually
We're the chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next report, General Counsel, Mr. West.
Okay, so I'll see if I can shorten this. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission issued a June 15, 2023 order addressing power petition and Erie's cross-petition wherein we asked for help resolving our disputes. There was a July 5 request where FERC denied our nod pass the amendment to license. We have taken a request to the AG to both pursue an affirmative case against Erie seeking to roll back their understanding of their lack of a need for an agreement with us on the reservoir operations at Conklinville. Since my report to the board, I have heard from the AG's office, who basically indicated their Claims Bureau is undertaking a review of our requests and will get back to us somewhere along the way. At the same time, the AG asked if ultimately we wanted them to pursue an appeal of FERC's ruling. FERC has come back with what is essentially a tolling order on August, well, July 14. We petitioned for rehearing of FERC's determination. On August 14, FERC issued a tolling order, basically saying that they would continue to consider the substantive appeal that we had lodged against their order. But by commission rules, they were supposed to address that within 30 days. This tolling order basically gave us the authority to pursue an appeal of their denial of the ruling to the U.S. Court of Appeals for the D.C. Circuit. And the AG's office basically asked us, "Do you want to pursue this now?" In FERC's truly tolling order, they also basically said, "A further order addressing the substance of your appeal or substance of your request for rehearing will be forthcoming." Therefore, we've told the AG, "At this point, we don't want to appeal the denial of our request for rehearing." Clear as mud, but that's the procedural position we're in at this point. So basically, sometime in the next several months, FERC will address that rehearing request on our petition to compel Erie to enter into a reservoir operating agreement. At the same time, on July 5, we sent a request to FERC asking for authority to divert water around Conklinville during the pendency of this whole thing. FERC came back pretty quick and said, "You haven't asked in the right way. We think that you ought to conduct a number of studies and submit those studies to us, and at that point, we'll be in a position to determine whether it's in the public interest to allow you to divert water around." I think it was code for, "Oh, hell, no, you're not getting what you want." We didn't believe them and sent them another letter asking for clarification because in their order, they indicated that we cannot divert. And yet, at the same time, Erie Boulevard asked us, literally within 72 hours of getting that order from FERC saying, "You can't divert," Erie turns around and says, "Hey, would you divert for us when it's in our interests?" So we asked for a ruling from FERC. FERC indicated that, in fact, we did not have authority to divert when it was in our interests to do so. But if we had been doing so for many, many years, when Erie asked us, it was, well, it was okay. We could divert when Erie asks us. So as long as we don't deviate from our normal practice, those diversions are still permitted. One, it seems arbitrary to me, but two, so they asked us to divert. We start diverting. We'll determine when we stop diverting. And we'll probably be in compliance with, with FERC's order. All right. Any questions on the Erie side of things?
Can I prompt one, Counselor, just by teaming this up for you? I hope that exchange with FERC on just the issue of whether we need to continue to perform, which is in FERC's mindset now, just as you say, issue's not quite right on the federal side because we were expecting the other order. No such impediment to moving forward with the state action.
There is, there is no impediment to moving forward with the state action right now. And we hope that the Claims Bureau at the Attorney General's Office will see it our way, have the time, and be willing to pursue that on our behalf. If they don't, the next avenue would be coming to the board and asking for money to hire outside counsel to pursue that in state court.
And a few, there are other strategies and approaches on the legislative side and working with our partners in state government that we'll be talking to the board about over the next few months.
Yes. Turning to Stillwater. Stillwater is not coming off their 1.5 figure. We also do not necessarily agree with that 1.5 figure. And we will continue to pursue other avenues to come to an agreement with Stillwater regarding the purchase price for that plant and pursue approvals necessary to consummate the purchase of that plant should we get to the point where we have something that we can advance. We probably will reach out to OSC and start that process to see what it is they would likely approve as we move forward. We've been pretty adamant that there were certain things that we thought that OSC would need to see. And we are, I think, in a position now where we can say, "Is what we have adequate, or do you need to see some of the other things that, that we were thinking that you might need to see?" Anything else you want to say about that?
I'll just also note, we have reached out to the New York Power Authority about a possible, you know, they've got some new legislative authority to develop power, new projects or takeover projects passed as part of last year's state budget. We think we'll probably have an opportunity to set up a site visit with some of their folks in the next month or so. Executive Changer is helping to facilitate that conversation. And I think that, you know, frankly, might be a good solution. We'll need an entity that can actually write a check to buy the plant at some point, and it would be good if it was an entity that could then operate the plant and sell power. We can do neither of those things so, at present. So, so I think it would be a very productive partnership if, if that's, if that's a possibility. And, and again, as I think we've reported to the board before, Mr. Tucker had informed us that he had a potential purchaser of the plant. Subsequently, all the correspondence to us has said, "No, you're purchasing the plant. Don't go, go." So it's possible that there may still be a private sector suitor in a direct sale. But it's clear, as Counselors reported, that Silver Associates wants, wants to proceed along the lines of purchasing the plant. So as Counsel alluded, there's several things we need to get going, and not the least of which is to see what OSC is gonna say about all of this. But I think we'll, we'll hope that these discussions with Mike will bear some fruit as well.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Move on. Compliance Officer. That says compliance, I'm sorry. How old is this agenda?
Roll this agenda. At the Secretary of
I believe it is
Director of Administration of Service's report can be found on page 47. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the recording period, I completed the quarterly compliance audits at the second of the field office and the Black River Area Office. The audits are performed to ensure compliance with our established policies and procedures. Additionally, I provided annual mandatory staff training to all district employees, including blue structural harassment and workplace discrimination prevention, workplace violence prevention, driver safety, and information integrity of fairness. Worth noting is the Indian Lake Dam Rehabilitation Project contract has been sent to the AG to have reviewed and approved it, and it is now pending OSC. On pages 48 to 50, you will find the contract status sheets. They are included for your review and satisfy the public authority of law requirements. That is my report unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Next, Chief Fiscal Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can find the CFO report on page 51 of your packet. Let me just update a couple items that I mentioned in my summary. First, to share is that the Office of State Controller recently acquired by conducting additional field work as part of their secure yoga critical systems audit. We are working with them to schedule these tasks so the field work and testing can be completed in the coming weeks. Second, I'm happy to report that the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation has released its draft intended use plan for federal fiscal year, October, for federal fiscal year 2024, which starts on October 1. The encouraging news is that the Regulating District's Indian Lake Dam Rehabilitation Project appears on the annual list, which means that the project may qualify for funding in coming years. We have prepared a financing application and will submit it to EFC as soon as the draft intended use plan is finalized. We expect that to occur shortly after the public comment period closes at the end of September. Hopefully, I will have even better news to share and a resolution to ask you to review and approve with respect to financing for this project in the very near future. And I'm now happy to pause and further answer any questions you may have about Regulating Districts.
Any questions?
We do have, I need a resolution to approve some board member expenses. So let me just say, if you don't mind, that I'd like to call your attention to the signed affidavit included on page 94 of your packet. It lists necessary and reasonable expenses incurred by board members relating to their participation in the August 1 board meeting. Article 3, Section 2 of the Regulating District's bylaws, both old and as well as the new and improved version, taken up and adopted by this body today, require the board to approve payment before any reimbursement can be made and before the rest of our motion about these expense reimbursements. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about them.
Any questions? I don't. I need a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The next report is Chief Engineer, who is in Italy, but it's reported in the, in the packet for you to look at. That won't answer any questions because you're not here, do you?
Lights are going down.
Next, any board member questions or comments? Can we ask about project improvements?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I'm sure Mr. Altan would speak about it if he were here. The board made the call that we are required to be out of the water as far as our work, not, not all of it's completed by the end of this month. And we had our weekly update on call today, and we believe we will be done. They had some excellent progress the last few weeks. I will note, just full transparency, full transparency. They have added some leadership. The contractor has added some new and different leadership on site, and that has, that has yielded a dramatically different result than what we've seen over the last couple of months. We continue to have representative punishment on site to speed approvals on different design elements and consistency with, with the design for the project. We have an inspection set up with New York State D.C. Dam Safety on September 22, after which we hope to receive permission to re-fill on the west side. And then we will begin removing those sandbags that form the coffee dam cell as we were already doing on the east side. It is my hope that members might be interested after our October meeting in Watertown and a short drive to Hawkinsville on maybe their way home, and a tour of the project, which I think will, I think if we had scheduled the tour of the project any sooner, I wouldn't, I wouldn't advertise it. But I'm pleased it's been a long road, and it's been a difficult one. But we're nearing completion, and it looks like it's going to work out. Any questions on that?
Any other board member comments? I need a resolution for our next board meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for Watertown on 10/11.
I made a second resolution, which includes Watertown. One in the packet. There is two. One of them is crossed out, and the other one is Watertown.
Is that the same?
You have a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Exactly, location, TB. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just before we adjourn, I just wanted, this was my fault. I apologize. I had a board meeting at the Glove last night. It went two hours and I yelled at the president and I go, no meeting should go two hours. This is crazy. So I feel responsible.
You're well on the d.
We're well on the d. So anyway, hopefully do it.
I got you covered, Chair.
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hayes, Mr. who?
I second that.
Oh, Mr. Reagan. Thank you. So we're barking back at the post office.
Are we off recording?
We're still recording. Just pause for one moment.